I would like to call the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, a free and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And adjustments to the agenda, we have one?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. I do have one in addition to, there was one other item approved for recommendation by the Personnel Committee last week, and that was to approve a revised job description for the Administrative Office Assistant in the Administrator's Office. And so I'd like to add that under 5B.
Great. Thank you. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Do I hear a motion to accept, approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And I'm sorry, I don't have my sheet to read the message, but I think I have the gist of it memorized. So, it will not be exactly word-for-word as I've done in the past. But at this time, we will invite the public to come to the table with their comments. And I'm assuming that there are some people that would like to speak to public comment or, great, great. And this is an opportunity for the public to be heard and to speak for up to five minutes, to speak to an issue of county concern. Comments must be civil and address the board. And, so, please, at this time, Ray, are you, Ms. People? And then if you would also state your name and address for the record as well. And then sign in on the sheets. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ray People from Lutzen, 623 Caribou Trail in Lutzen, and a member of the Lutzen Town Board. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for this opportunity to speak. I'm just wondering about this pictometry proposal of more monies to be spent. Is there already this program owned by the county, and you're just wanting to expand the coverage?
We can't answer questions during public comment. I'm sorry, that's the part I left out. We can't, yeah, we can't answer questions. But we can, and I forgot to mention this, we can, any of your issues, we can during Commissioner Concerns, which actually will not be that long into the meeting today, if you want to hear what we have to say about your concerns, we can pick them up during Commissioner Concerns, which will happen at about 11:00 a.m. So you are very welcome to stay and hear anything that we choose to-
And hear your response to my question, or whatever is going on with this.
Yes, exactly.
Because I don't know, I would hope that each of you have been able to read the response to the taxpayer survey, which was an overwhelming response. And I'm just saying, as, you know, a citizen and taxpayer retired, with a husband who is retired, that, to look so very closely at the money that is being spent. I think that we've said over and over how important it is that needs be taken care of. But the things that are not needs, that are not law enforcement, and the things that government has a responsibility for, to really think very hard. What are other options? For a bike trail, do they need to do some fundraising? As a board member of town, you know, of Lutzen, boy, I've been out there fundraising for one of our, you know, celebrations, and for Birch Grove, fundraising. Because man alive, it can't all come from taxpayers who are really feeling the pinch. Because it's not just taxes. It's energy. Energy costs that go up, and food costs that go up, and the budget. And so, if we can run our county government like you would a household budget, and look and say, these are the things we absolutely have to have, these are the things we would like to have, but you know, dear ones, if the money isn't there, we're not going to be doing those. Okay? Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Todd, you're welcome to come forward. And if you would state your name and address and-
Todd Sylvester, 206 North Broadway, Grand Marry. I'm here to ring after her clearly, but the reason I came is because people who work call me, my phone rings, they knock at my door, they stop me in public, and they can't necessarily be here on Tuesday mornings when they're out trying to build somebody's house, for instance. And, you know, they're really feeling the pinch, just like she said, and they're kind of resonating the same message. They don't feel like the county board represents them anymore. And they don't feel your levy increases, they don't feel that, that you care if they can afford those increases. They feel like your ideas, we'll just find new people to buy your house, who can. And it's a sad feeling when they don't feel represented. I basically gave up on you guys a while ago and decided, you're not representing me. Coming into Truth and Taxation a year ago, overwhelmingly, I believe it was approximately three to one, were against the 19.9, and everybody suggested you bring it down in the five to six, but we're right back there again, because you're not listening, and, you know, little things. It's like the apple orchard over at the jail. I told citizens, when that got planted, they'll never put an addition on there. They're going to build something brand-new, something big, something crazy. People thought I was crazy, but I said, they'll never kill an apple tree in the name of justice in Cook County. And you're going for some great big Justice Department building, or whatever it's called. So we've been hearing on the radio. Is it really what the people want? I think you have to more, ask people more, and maybe go to what they want, if you feel you want to represent them, or otherwise, it's just big business. Thank you.
Okay, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Lloyd, are you speaking?
Lloyd Speck, Grand Marry, Minnesota, 2068 West Highway 62. First of all, I'm not here to try to be rude or real ridicule, but, so don't, so I'm trying to say that a lot of times, I might get carried away a little bit and everything, but I'm no stranger to these public comment periods and stuff, and I've been following county government for over 20 years. And what I'm afraid, again, today is, what normally happens is, every time people from the public generally talks, it goes on deaf ears. And I hope today it don't, because I'm real concerned in a position like I'm in also, I'm trying to sell all my property, and, because I know I can't sustain, keep paying the higher taxes. And I don't mind paying my taxes and whatever, I've paid it for, I was born and raised in this county and devoted my whole life here. But I do know, if the, these levies go through that are being proposed, there's going to be many people in this county that are going to be forced to leave here. And I'm dead serious, I talk to a lot of people, and that's what they say, and even a lot of businesspeople with these increases, you know, they keep talking about low-income housing and whatever, and they're going to have, they told me, well, we'll just raise our rates, or, you know, most of them say that, and the other half say, we'll just sell and get out of here. Well, it's going to come to a point, sooner or later, where the chicken's going to come home to roost, and cuts are going to have to be made. And I know, like, what happened after last year, I think the budget started out 20, maybe 24 percent, whatever, finally got down to 11.22. And I remember, after the Truth and Taxation meeting and a few meetings that followed, that the board had, and then the point is, Mr. Cadwell and everybody, said, well, we'll start working on the budget right away. Well, anyway, evidently, I don't see where that really happened, because the thing is, when you've got a total of actual 2,000 people paying taxes, proximately, and 1,000 seasonal homeowners, you can only have so much. And I mean, there's a lot, everybody wants a lot of things. And I know, like, in my own position, you know, my truck is over 10 years old, I'd like to buy it, but in the position I'm in now, with some medical problems, I can't buy one, you know? So I mean, I think there's certain things you're going to have, people are going to, this board is going to have to bite the bullet on, grab the bull by the horns, and say, we're going to have to make cuts. I mean, the only way you can really balance a budget with a county that we don't really have no revenue come in. You take, like, with the village, they've got their golf course, municipal liquor store, the tourist park, but as far as the county goes, we sort of stayed stagnant as far as getting new revenue in, as far as population growth goes, almost 0 percent, approximately in 15 years, maybe 35, 40 people. So I guess I'm just hoping that something will happen where people aren't going to be forced to leave the county, and other people can move in, because if they start checking, you know, we keep talking, you know, about what our taxes are and other things, how much you pay for groceries, gas, whatever, all down the line, it all adds up. And then we, you know, I know a lot of people on this board think we've got a little tax rate, but the thing of it is, when you add up our estimated market values on the house, they're so much higher, you know, in comparison to Luther, whatever, and I don't have to state these figures, because I'm sure you people know them, you know, and then you add up the special taxing district, the school referendum tax, and then we have the hospital now, that, we don't know what's going to happen with that, they're 24 million, you know, of bonding, and that could be stuck on the taxpayers. And I truly believe, to make this county sustainable for the people on retirement incomes, their set incomes, you know, Social Security's only went up 1.6 percent in 10 years, and the little bit you get this year will all go back into the Medicare. So what I'm hoping is that, that something will change, and something's got to change, I mean, sooner or later, because you can't have 11 percent increases last year, and whether you guys settle on 15 or 16, or whatever happens this year, and then 14 next year, and 12, 10, 12. It isn't sustainable to live here when you've got so many people, and I don't know if this is real accurate, but it's up to, I know it's over 40 percent that are on set incomes that live here. And I mean, things aren't selling. I'm sure if a lot of people could sell their summer homes and stuff, they'd really get out of here, but I know, like, earlier this summer, there was 185 places for sale and that, but I don't know what it is now, but I-
Lloyd, your time is up.
Oh, okay.
Wrap it up in a few words.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Thank you. Consent agenda. Is there anything that should be pulled from consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. So, Tim Nelson, Land Services Director, you are welcome to come to the table.
Thanks.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board. Thank you for having me this morning. What I'm presenting to you this morning is basically a culmination of a discussion we've been having for about a year now, with regards to a program that is mandated by the state, and that is the Buffer Program. And basically, in this last summer, in discussions with the board here, this board went ahead and passed a resolution to opt-in to regulating or enforcing the program. There are two options. The program is one of those mandated services, so either we would be enforcing this, or the state of Minnesota would be enforcing this. So there is a certain amount of value to the county to having this program regulated on a local level, as opposed to having the state regulate this. Along with this particular program, there is an earmark of funding that's associated with it, so it's much like the Shoreland Program, although we don't receive quite as much funding from the state for the mandated Shoreland Management Program. This particular funding is, was about $40,000 in the first year, which is 2017, and $50,000 in 2018, and we basically don't anticipate a lot of increase in the amount of expenditures in regulating this program, simply because it's a kind of an overlap of the Shoreland Management that we have already. This program, as I had discussed with this board previously in the summertime, is really more impactful for those counties that have a lot of agriculture, a lot of public ditching systems that we don't have. We certainly have ditches, but we don't have an official ditch system. And so, this ordinance will, the adoption of this particular ordinance and culmination of the discussions we've been having, is not going to have a lot of impact seen by the general public or the property owners, simply because we've already been regulating this area in with the Shoreland Management Ordinance. But we do have an ordinance that is drafted up, we took it from the public, or the Planning Commission at a public hearing a few weeks back, and they basically just wanted a little bit of clarification in terms of where the jurisdictions separated between us and the DNR or Bowser Board of Water and Soil Resources with regards to this program. And there were two members of the public that did show up, again, asking for some clarifications, but did not provide any comment. Either way, we had no other comment received from the public leading up to this point. So, the Planning Commission did, again, discuss it, and then unanimously recommends adoption of this ordinance by the Board of Commissioners.
Great. Thank you, Tim. So, questions and comments? I'll start with you, Commissioner DeShaw.
Okay.
Commissioner Bushen?
No.
Commissioner DuKirk?
No questions.
Commissioner Sterling?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm just glad we're able to finalize this. It's been on the agenda for, like I said, a few months up to a year, and when you read in the paper about this, it really pertains to agriculture and so forth, so I'm glad you're kind of tying it in with the water also, because we don't have a lot of agricultural here. So thank you for doing that.
Great, thank you. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support. Thank you. Are there any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cadwell, you have an administration update, and then the item, you actually-
Madam Chair, I don't actually have any items for administrator update today, but if I will answer questions, if you have them. We've got a lot of items for discussion on the committee, the whole meeting, and I will just make the clarification that the EDA budget request in background, we're having a presentation about the background and the history of some of the projects with the EDA. The discretionary budget requests, we're going to review the recommendation from the panel that was appointed out of the Public Health and Human Services Advisory Board to make a recommendation on how to handle those requests. And then the Truth and Taxation discussion is related to the agenda development and the format of that meeting. We will be discussing budget items specifically at the meeting, we'll be discussing the format of the meeting for Monday night. So I just wanted to clarify those things.
Thank you.
And as far as, as item B, Administrative Office Assistant, which I just handed out, when we, when we hired the fiscal officer to work with the fiscal supervisor in Public Health and Human Services, we knew that we would be reallocating some of the time that Julie Bergman spends, that at some point in time between now and when Lori is fully competent in handling her work up there, which is probably going to happen pretty soon, that Julie won't be working 10 hours as a billing assistant in a case aid up in Health and Human Services. So one of the primary reasons for reviewing the job description was to eliminate those pieces, and to talk more specifically about what it is that she's actually doing. So a couple of the key changes, other than removing the stuff related to Health and Human Services, was to talk about administrative duties instead of office duties, to talk about the fact that she's actually going to be coordinating data requests and processing things like that, and we understand the nature of that. So, the, and the Kronos, the implementation of the Kronos Human Resource Information System, she'll be taking on a larger portion of that. Instead of managing things in little files and notes and separate portions, she's going to take on a significant role in that. So, the job description has been changed to, to display those changes in the job as the jobs progressed, and the changes in the allocation of hours, also some functions relating to communication. So, the Personnel Committee, the Personnel Committee last week approved this job with some minor edits, and I believe most of those were made, so we're asking the board to approve this job description. Just a reminder, the Personnel-
Can you speak a little bit more into your-
I'm sorry.
Yes, we cannot hear. Back here.
The Personnel Committee will review job descriptions, and then the classification will be done administratively. So we're asking for the board's approval of the change in the job description, so it can be reviewed.
Great. Thank you. So, questions? Commissioner Sterling?
No questions. I think it's good to have a review of each job description that's here.
Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
Just wanted, Personnel Committee, we discussed the need for a driver's license. Did you get an answer on that?
We're still actually checking to see if we're going to change that across the board, or if we're going to review that. So, yes, we're looking at the qualifications for positions and identifying if a driver's license is required for all of our positions, or if it's required for a set of positions that actually have driving duties.
Thank you. Commissioner Bushen?
I would just like to comment that I think it's a healthy organization when you look at needs of the organization, you look at staffing, and you adapt, and you change things according to more efficiency or better suitability of the service, rather than lock yourself into a job description that's outdated. So, good work.
Thank you, Commissioner Bushen. Commissioner DeShaw?
Member number eight, organizes monthly greet and treat. That should, that needs to be in the job description?
On the second page. It could probably be changed to be in a general way, to be dealing with staff functions and coordinating staff functions. Yes, it's a specific, it is a specific task, and it probably best represented as in a more general task, saying coordinating staff functions. Have you ever been to a greet and treat? No, you've got to make it.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. And not necessarily you need to move forward, I sort of skipped over, are there any questions for Jeff about this administrative update, or just maybe what's happened this week? Commissioner DeShaw?
Can I get an update on the highway engineer, how that went?
Yeah, that's a great question, thank you, Commissioner.
Good question.
We met and we interviewed two candidates. We had one candidate of the four withdraw, and we had one candidate not appear for their interview on Friday. And the search committee recommendation was that we make an offer to one of the candidates that we didn't interview. I did some background checking yesterday, and fashioned a job offer for that position, and right now I'm trying to get a hold of that candidate. So, as soon as I get an update on that, I'll email the group and let them know if we've got a change in status.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jeff? Okay, thank you. So we will move on to the Commissioner Concern and Report, Meetings to Note, Part of the Meeting. Any Commissioner Concerns anybody would like to read up? Commissioner Sterling?
I was wondering if we want to address Ms. People's question about the pictometry?
Yes.
Yes. It's not a machine. It's something, it's a system we already have, so we're not bringing in a big machine, putting it in Rena's office.
Right.
So, it's a, it's a system that we already have, and it needs to be updated, and we're doing it in conjunction with the DNR Forest Service. We haven't determined yet what they would contribute to it, so we're waiting on that before we make our final decision.
Did you want anything, Jeff?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would, I would add, just a little bit, that the comments in the newspapers said we're investing in a quarter-million-dollar pictometry machine, which is inaccurate. It also says that that information is available readily and freely from Google, and that's inaccurate, because Google and those other searches are actually populated by the, by the data that the local agencies bring together and update. So that data doesn't get updated if we don't update it. In all honesty, that data that we last updated six years ago is crucial in making our staff as efficient as they are. A lot of work can be done from our offices and with our desktops, because we have accurate data. We're looking at probably six-inch or three-inch detail on this stuff, and we're, this year we're going to have partners with the city, with the Forest Service, with Grand Portage, with everybody, with everybody coming together and owning the need to keep and maintain this database, so that, so that we can do things efficiently. A lot of it has to do with county services, but then it becomes publicly available, and it's used by lots of people in the community, realtors, and assessors, and everybody else that needs access to the data. And that's how a lot of our stuff on our website is driven, is by that data, that data set. So, the actual $250,000, the price is actually going up, because some of the partners are asking for additional level of detail, but the price to the county is actually going down, because they're also sharing some of the base costs with that. And the, the decision to move forward with this has already, has already gone forward. We'll be having the final contracts and lists coming before the board in December, so we can get this stuff, get this process moving quickly. Basically, we pay for this because we don't have a plane, and we don't have the cameras, and we don't have the staff that evaluate this. So we purchased this from a company that specialized to do that. Our costs have come down significantly from the initial number of $250,000. The Forest Service, I know, is coming in with over $125,000, so.
Great, thank you. Other Commissioner Concerns? Meetings to note? Nothing?
I've got my 17th meeting on the 28th.
Yes, thank you. Do you want to speak to that whole, the meeting is on the 28th?
The 28th, it's going to be the presentation of the work that's coming next year on County Route 17.
Great. And it will be led by an engineer firm?
MSA.
MSA. Jason DiPiazza is the primary contact with, with that process, and myself and Scott Benokum will be there at least, representing the Highway Department staff, and, and yeah, so it should be a good, good meeting. Five o'clock on Tuesday, the 28th.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a real positive thing for Grand Portage, that road hasn't, it's a Cassa Road, it hasn't been touched since 1963, so people of Grand Portage are very excited to see something done in our, in Grand Portage.
Exciting. So I would imagine you'd have great attendance at that meeting.
Yes.
And I know from our meeting around County Route 45, it was done last month, it was really well-attended, and I think alleviated a lot of people's fears about the process, and it was just a really, really good meeting. People left completely with a different frame of mind.
Madam Chair, I have a report. I was at the Arrowhead Regional County Meeting last week, and John Angaro, who is the Legislative Liaison, asked us to consider a few things for legislation when we go to our Minnesota countywide meeting in St. Cloud. We'll all be receiving issues to vote on, and some of this already came up, and we had District One. I'll just briefly mention them, because the Secretary of the Arrowhead will be sending out to us an update on what we should be considering for bonding next year, because the legislature's a bonding year. I'll just briefly go over them, because we'll get a list from her, which would be the same thing. thing, but one of the things that Mr. Angaro thinks is really important for us to, uh, consider is the Etnirk, um, the meat processing, um, part of that program, and they're, they're only, they're so close to getting the whole thing, so the bonding for next year to help finish that off would be really important. Uh, another thing would be the wetland, uh, replacement, PILT, Indian Child Care Welfare Act. So those are the things we've already discussed, I think, for the last two years. So, but we need to re- redo this because at the legislature, they need to hear this over and over again. So by, uh, email, we'll be receiving those things and issues to, to vote on, and, uh, we can either do it individually or as a group, probably as a group when, when it comes. So I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner DeKirk?
Uh, just one item that was brought up during public comment, I don't really know, I didn't understand the question, but it will be discussed in the EDA budget, but I know not everyone will be here for that. The twenty-five thousand dollars for the administrator of the Superior Cycling Association request has been removed from the EDA budget. Just so everyone is aware, it has been pulled, it was voted on and removed.
Thank you. Commissioner Bushen?
Yes, uh, yesterday we had our third meeting, uh, the Sawtooth Bluffs Steering Committee, and I would just like to announce to the public that there will be an opportunity for input. Um, we're working with the city, the county and the city are doing a joint, uh, working agreement with the Arrowhead Regional Development Corporation that's facilitating this. They also have, um, great, uh, technology services, so there'll be some information coming out, public information on seeking, um, input from user groups as well as various organizations and individuals. Uh, this land has got county and city land in it, uh, the intent is to have some kind of regional park, but also a focus of this will be community use. And so I know that the dog group, I think ATV group, uh, they'll be invited, uh, snowmobiles, there's a trail that runs up there, it's a hiking trail, and we wanna emphasize that we want input from all people. And the first phase of this will be an interactive kind of map that will be done on computer, and it'll give people opportunity to see what they would like to have in that. Phase two of that will be, you know, we have a lot of environmental impact issues up there and a lot of that land will never be used for anything because it's wetlands or you've maybe put a little, you know, bridge over part of it and then you have this tremendous slope, so, and another issue is possibly looking at some of the land, uh, for potential, you know, residential development or some kind of development, um, that we put under the term of amenities. And so the, when you see the term amenities and that, it's gonna mean, you know, it could mean cabins, it could mean some kind of, uh, trailhead facility or whatever. Intention of this is to get legacy funding money and not to be at any kind of local expense. Um, and so that's the process we're going through. The process itself will determine whether the feasibility of this is going to happen and so a lot of that's gonna have to depend upon, you know, what the people want because it's city and county land. And this is something that is long range, it's maybe not gonna happen a lot in my time or some others' time, but maybe those a lot younger than me, but I think we're looking ahead, uh, what we can do and also to get support, uh, from legacy funding, which is, uh, very interested in this concept of, um, looking at that. So, just wanted to give an update.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeff, you looked like you were gonna say something.
Madam Chair, there were, there were two other questions that were raised during public comment that I think we could address easily. Um, and the first is the comment that we're gonna build a criminal justice center and, and the fact of the matter is, is we are, we are going to, um, contract for a jail study and an RFP, and part of that, if we determine that there's a need, may be to look at the building and may make recommendations. And we have no idea what the scope of that process is yet, um, but next week I will be bringing you, uh, the proposal that has been vetted by that committee so that you can affirm the decision of the committee and the contractor to begin going forward with the study so that we actually know what our needs are and we can look ten, twenty, thirty years down the road and try to plan for a better future and not, not make miss, short-sighted mistakes in building planning. Um, so, the money for the study was approved much earlier in this year, uh, no money has been, has been set aside for any project. When we were talking about doing financial management planning, we were talking about identifying the fact that we would have capacity to take care of our buildings in the future. So nothing has been decided, there's gonna be a public process as part of that, um, but it's important to note that there is no plan for a, a big building. I'm not saying there won't be a future plan for a building. I'm saying that this process will help us to determine that. And then the second comment was, um, we, we came out after the, the meeting in December last year and we talked about we were gonna start planning for budgeting right away and, and I think it's important that people know that we did start planning for budgeting right away. I was in Brady's office the day after the final budget was, was issued, we were looking at numbers, we were looking at long-range plans. We've had a budget committee meeting since March of this year, we added four public outreach, uh, meetings in August, we've created a, an addition to the website where we've made all those materials available, we put additional information that came in with the tax statements this year. I think we've done everything we said we were gonna do as far as making the budgeting process more accessible to people. Um, and it's important to note that, that the board has been working on this and, and there's, there are two ways to balance the budget. The budget is structurally, is structurally deficient and it can be balanced one of two ways. We can cut the programs and services we offer or we can raise the amount of money that we have to offset those programs and services. And throughout this conversation, we hear people say it's a hardship, we hear people say cut costs, and at the same time, we don't hear any recommendations about which programs we're willing to do without, and to this point, the board has not been supportive of cutting any level of programs and services. So by, long and the short of it, that's gonna be the conversation we'll have at the Truth and Taxation meeting, and then again, we'll listen to the public.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Commissioner DeKirk?
I think another point on our budget is the comment that we reduced from twenty-four to eleven. Jeff, you'll probably have to help me with this. We chose not to pay for things we already have.
The first five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, eight percent in this year's budget, is because of the choice made last December not to pay bills. The budget wasn't balanced, costs were cut and they were deferred until twenty-eighteen. So, the budget hasn't been balanced. When you decide that we're gonna buy a grader, but we're gonna pay for half of it this year and half of it next year, that's not balancing the budget, that's just cost shifting, and it's not a, it's not a sustainable option any more than using fund balances to mitigate levy.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a, a comment, a future, a comment about the Justice Center or the jail study as well. Um, there have been many studies, I mean, we will be studying this, which we need to do, we spend a lot of money putting people in jail because we only have a seventy-two hour, uh, facility, so we wanna look at the cost-effectiveness of that. Would it be more cost-effective to keep people here? There's also been many social studies, uh, recently about the effect, long-term effect on families who have a member incarcerated and the multi-generational effect that has when there's been a bad jail experience, how that, um, affects the family and creates another generation of bad jail experience and another generation of bad jail experience. So, wouldn't it be great if with this study, we could actually save money and create, um, more social justice within the jail system and stop, um, incarcerating generation after generation? So I think it's a really valuable, um, activity to be engaged in is planning to make the community stronger and better.
Commissioner DeKirk?
On the jail facility and the meetings that I attend outside of here, we're spending, on average, a quarter of a million a year, more than that, but on average, sending our residents who are incarcerated elsewhere. And one of the things, there's been three sheriffs since I was elected, and I believe every single one of them has talked about the detox program that Greg talked about this morning, and that when they're called to drop them off in Duluth, they have no idea what happens to them until they're in jail again or until they drop them off at detox again. So this is really something we need to address and, you know, it's important that we look at it and be respectful of it and we find out and maybe it, it won't be cost-effective for us to change our facility, maybe we are using the least expensive option of two hundred and fifty thousand a year to send them out, so I just don't see how that's possible, but maybe the study will say that that's the most efficient way for us to do it. I don't know yet, but we'll look at it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other items or concern, meetings to note?
Recession.
If not, uh, we shall recess and reconvene at one o'clock with our committee in the whole. Thank you. I'm still having trouble-